Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Kate Prendergast. I'm a town resident and I have children at all three of the schools this year. Fourth grade, seventh grade, and ninth grade. What brings me here today is to talk about recess at the elementary school. It was brought to my attention by my fourth grader that during recess he can play only with the children in his class. He came home during the first week of school and I could tell he was feeling sad. He is usually full of energy and a very happy guy. This is when he asked me, "Mom, can I only get COVID at my school?" I replied, "No," and asked him what made him think that. He then went on to express to me that he could play outside with his friends at the beach, at the park, at other events held by the town, more recently during flag football at Cristofaro, on his soccer team, and even at after-hours events at the school. We're now on to year two of this pandemic and I think these kids have been very resilient. My son fully understands the need to wear a mask while indoors and in a closed space. However, separating the kids during outdoor activities does not align with the rest of the outdoor activities within the community where we all live. I understand why he's confused. I'm here to ask if the board will reconsider the regulations at recess and let the kids have all grade-level playtime with their peers when they are outdoors. A number of neighboring schools like West Kingstown Elementary, The Compass School, Charlestown Elementary, and Hamilton Elementary have already implemented this and I'm hoping we can do the same. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for open forum? All right, thank you. We are moving on. So it is now time for our showcase. I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Cummings to do some introductions.
Great, thank you. So I'd like to call Mr. Gathen up. And so recently our FFA made a trip out to the Nationals in Indianapolis. And so Erin and our FFA group is here to tell us a little bit about their trip.
Awesome. So we'd like to thank you guys tonight for everything that you did in supporting us to go out to Indy this year. It was a great year being able to go back out after last year not having a convention with COVID. State staff, national staff were very excited to bring us back to Indianapolis this year and welcome as many members as they could back. We knew it wasn't going to be quite what it was in the past, but the membership and the students were very resilient this year and had an awesome time and a great turnout. I have two officers here that are going to talk us through the PowerPoint. We have Emily Myers, our chapter vice president and out-of-district student, and Reagan Dunn, our chapter president from Narragansett.
My name is Emily Myers and I'm the vice president of the Narragansett FFA chapter. This year we are fortunate enough to attend the 94th National FFA Convention and Expo. During this trip, we were able to represent the aquaculture of Narragansett. We did this by cutting a boat in half and naming it the Miss Mariner. We were also able to hand out over 3,000 samples of coffee milk, which is our state drink. Many people liked that. And we were also able to attend the opening ceremony of the National Convention. During this, we got to meet our national officers and see them do the opening ceremony. And we also got to hear their speeches. Along with that, we were able to walk into the doors to an FFA sign that welcomed us into the door of the National FFA Convention.
My name's Reagan Dunn and I'm president of the Narragansett FFA chapter. As we were there, we also got to see our two state alumnis Hannah and Abby Foster received the highest degree of FFA, the American degree, while we were there. We also, as long with opening ceremony, we also got to see closing ceremony and see the convention fully end. As long with, we also got to see our new national officers receive their jackets. We thank you guys so much for allowing us to go on this trip. And we also thank the school committee, our superintendent, Mr. Cummings, Mr. Warner, for coming with us, and also our advisors, Ms. Burden, Ms. Shea, Mr. Hughes, and Mr. Gathen for supporting us on this trip.
We'd love to ask you a couple quick questions if you don't mind.
Yeah, of course.
So I'll throw out my questions and you can take turns answering them however you want. So what year are you girls in in school?
I'm a senior this year.
I'm a sophomore this year.
Okay, so I'm going to throw out my three questions and you can answer them however you want. So my first question is, have either of you ever been on this trip before to the convention?
This year was my first year attending it. Last year I got to watch it online a little bit.
Okay.
And this was my second year. I got to go my sophomore year.
Excellent. And so here's my two different questions. One is, can you share like a highlight, like something that you really thought was really cool or you really enjoyed at the convention? And then can you also share like something that you're really enjoying about being part of the FFA like at school? So those are my two different questions. Like a highlight from this particular convention, this trip, and then anything else that you're really, really enjoying being part of this at school?
So I can tell you one thing I really enjoyed at the convention was seeing the retiring speeches for the national officers and seeing those. They really kind of touched home a little bit for them like taking off their jackets in their final year doing that. And a lot of them were really cool. So that was probably one of the big things that I loved. And then one thing I also love about the FFA chapter that we do in Narragansett is how we can like come together and put bands together pretty fast and do it as a community.
Thank you.
One thing I liked about attending the National Convention is getting to meet everybody from the different states and like seeing all the different events there and stuff. And then something that I like about the FFA is how we all connect together and we get to do fun stuff and participate in all kinds of different activities.
Well, I stay up there, but I will say, very well spoken. Wonderful job with your presentation, very kind of succinct and direct and clear and very well spoken. And thank you. And I don't know if anyone else from the school committee has any comments or any questions for our presenters? Diane?
I have a question. I'm very interested in what you said when you first started about sawing the boat in half. So could you tell me a little bit more about how you use the half a boat? And was it a display or an experiment or was it in one of the contests?
So the boat that we did-
I understand why he's confused. I'm here to ask if the board will reconsider the regulations at recess and let the kids have all grade-level playtime with their peers when they are outdoors. A number of neighboring schools, like West Kingstown Elementary, The Compass School, Charlestown Elementary, and Hamilton Elementary have already implemented this and I'm hoping we can do the same. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for open forum? Okay. All right, thank you. We are moving on. So it is now time for our showcase. I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Cummings to do some introductions.
Great, thank you. So I'd like to call Mr. Gathen up. And so recently, our FFA made a trip out to the Nationals in Indianapolis. And so Erin and our FFA group is here to tell us a little bit about their trip.
Awesome. So we'd like to thank you guys tonight for everything that you did in supporting us to go out to Indy this year. It was a great year being able to go back out after last year, not having a convention with COVID. State staff, national staff were very excited to bring us back to Indianapolis this year and welcome as many members as they could back. We knew it wasn't going to be quite what it was in the past, but the membership and the students were very resilient this year and had an awesome time and a great turnout. I have two officers here that are going to talk us through the PowerPoint. We have Emily Myers, our chapter vice president and out-of-district student, and Reagan Dunn, our chapter president from Narragansett.
My name is Emily Myers and I'm the vice president of the Narragansett FFA chapter. This year, we are fortunate enough to attend the 94th Annual National FFA Convention and Expo. During this trip, we were able to represent the aquaculture of Narragansett. We did this by cutting a boat in half and naming it the Miss Mariner. We were also able to hand out over 3,000 samples of coffee milk, which is our state drink. Many people liked that. And we were also able to attend the opening ceremony of the national convention. During this, we got to meet our national officers and see them do the opening ceremony. And we also got to hear their speeches. Along with that, we were able to walk into the doors to an FFA sign that welcomed us into the door of the National FFA Convention.
My name's Reagan Dunn and president of the Narragansett FFA chapter. As we were there, we also got to see our two state alumnis, Hannah and Abby Foster, received the highest degree of FFA, the American degree, while we were there. We also, as long with opening ceremony, we also got to see closing ceremony and see the convention fully end. As long with, we also got to see our new national officers receive their jackets. We thank you guys so much for allowing us to go on this trip. And we also thank the school committee, our superintendent, Mr. Cummings, Mr. Warner, for letting, coming with us, and also our advisors, Ms. Burden, Ms. Shea, Mr. Hughes, and Mr. Gathen for supporting us on this trip.
We'd love to ask you a couple of quick questions, if you don't mind.
Yeah, of course.
So I, I'll throw out my questions and you can take turns answering them however you want. So, so what year are you girls in, in school?
I'm a senior this year.
I'm a sophomore this year.
Okay, so I'm going to throw out my three questions and you can answer them however you want. So my first question is, have either of you ever been on this trip before to the convention?
This year was my first year attending it. Last year, I got to watch it online a little bit.
Okay.
And this was my second year. I got to go my sophomore year.
Excellent. And so here's my two different questions. One is, can you share like a highlight, like something that you really thought was really cool or you really enjoyed at the convention? And then can you also share like something that you're really enjoying about being part of the FFA like at school? So those are my two different questions. Like a highlight from this particular convention, this trip, and then anything else that you're really, really enjoying being part of this at school?
So I can tell you one thing I really enjoyed at the convention was seeing the retiring speeches for the national officers and seeing those. They really kind of touched home a little bit for them like taking off their jackets in their final year doing that. And a lot of them were really cool. So that was probably one of the big things that I loved. And then one thing I also love about the FFA chapter that we do in Narragansett is how we can like come together and put bands together pretty fast and do it as a community.
Thank you.
One thing I liked about attending the national convention is getting to meet everybody from the different states and like seeing all the different events there and stuff. And then something that I like about the FFA is how we all connect together and we get to do fun stuff and participate in all kinds of different activities.
Well, I stay up there, but I will say, very well-spoken, wonderful job with your presentation, very kind of succinct and direct and clear and very well-spoken, and thank you. And I don't know if anyone else from the school committee has any comments or any questions for our presenters? Diane?
I have a question. I'm very interested in what you said when you first started about sawing the boat in half. So could you tell me a little bit more about how you use the half a boat? And was it a display or an experiment, or was it in one of the contests?
So the boat that we did, we went and got it out of the woods, out of Ms. Burton's yard. And then what we did is that we cut the back end off of it and we used it to represent the aquaculture. So we basically like designed it like it was a boat. We restored it and stuff. And then we built off of that, like it was coming in the sea and showed that. Because the main theme is like aquaculture and stuff.
Wow, and Mrs. Burton want her boat back?
And then we entered it in the Hall of State for the competition.
Wow, that's, that's really neat. Were, was Narragansett the only Rhode Island school at the convention?
Yeah.
Really? Oh, great. Sounds like you represented us very well. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from any school committee members? Alex?
I just want to say that you guys did a fantastic job and what a real treat it was for you guys to come here tonight to share your experiences. I remember as a former student in Narragansett, how jealous we all used to be when the FFA was going off on another trip. And to hear how well you guys represented us, really, really well done. And even though, you know, the PowerPoint presentation may not have been up there, we, we got to see all the photographs here as you were going through and it was really well organized as you were going through your presentation. It was like following through on script. So just really well done and, and thank you for coming tonight.
And, and we want to take the time too to thank all of the students for coming tonight. We know that you're very, very busy. You look really sharp in your jackets. We really appreciate you taking the time to come as a presence and support your fellow students that are presenting tonight and we really appreciate that. So what I will say at this time is we're going to take a very brief recess. We're sure that you have a lot of homework and you are all welcome to stay for as long as you want. We're going to take a brief recess at this time. If anybody wants to make an exit, that's your opportunity. We'll take like a two-minute recess. Are we all set to resume the camera? Yes? Okay, wonderful. All right, so we are back on track with our meeting. And we are on to oral reports. And we are starting with the, so Pete, I have a question. So with the school reports, are the principals coming up to give their school report? And then during the superintendent's report, you're going to circle back to them? Or what's the format you want for?
They can just include their school report when they come up and do their overview of their school.
Okay, right, it doesn't make any sense for them to come up twice.
Correct.
So if that works for you principals, so when you come up for your state assessment presentation, if there's any spotlights or highlights you also want to give for your school report, you can do it at that time. So with that, Pete, then let's move on to school committee reports. Are there any school committee members that have an update to give? Alex, you want to go first?
Sure, why not?
Okay, thanks.
On November 8th, Josh and I attended the first workshop for planning and development and brainstorming for the Special Education Local Advisory Committee. And it was a pretty good turnout, I have to say. And I'm sure we're going to hear more about it. But thank you, Melissa and Jill, for putting that together. And I know I can speak for both of us that we say we're very eager and very much looking forward to working with you and the rest of the team. And on November 10th, I was really, really excited and honored to have been invited to the CTE Open House at the Narragansett High School. And that was my first time actually being able to go back in 10 years. So I was able to walk down memory lane a little bit there and to see all the changes that have been done over the years. It felt, you know, very much like home, but a lot of updates had been done. So it took a little bit of, you know, familiarizing myself with the layout. But really, really job well done all around. Really appreciated that. And it was really great because, you know, we had heard so much about these CTE programs, but seeing them in practice and to see the students really present them well to all the parents and all of the, you know, all the guests that were coming in was really very much appreciated. Students did a fantastic job. They did a tour around the high school. I, you know, I kept, you know, sliding into some of the groups, just listened to the discussions and really just really appreciated all the work that went into it. And, and really thank you for including me in on it, so.
Great, thank you. Are there any, any other school committee members that have any reports to give? Okay, thank you. We are moving on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Cummings.
Great, thanks, Tammy. Well, the, the main part of our superintendent's report tonight is actually a review of our school development plan. So if you recall, at our last meeting, we went over the district development plan, right, and that directly feeds into our school development plans. And so we're going to have the principals and student services give an overview of what their plans look like for this year. And, you know, as a part of that, they'll give a little update of what's happening in the schools this month. But, and we will begin with our elementary school. So welcome, Lisa, and thanks for getting us going.
Thank you, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So we've had a lot of fun at the elementary school. We are slowly integrating some fun activities into the school. The end of, right before our Thanksgiving break, we are going to have a Fun Sock and Flannel Day. Just giving thanks and showing the kids our appreciation for all the hard work and things they've been doing. We tried to implement a once-a-month celebration of some sort. So on top of that, we've been doing a lot of work and kids are doing great. But as far as my school development plan and work that I've done with my school improvement team, I'm going to address the slide on the screen there. As far as the instructional core, which is going to take a look at our district goal number two, that's aligned to Dr. Cummings' district goals. We added a common planning time into our schedule. So now we have three, two additional times during the week. So our teachers now get to meet together as a team three times a week. And with that meeting, we've had the opportunity to start like a cyclical process of looking at reading, writing, math. So they sit together as a team and we've been looking at analyzing the data that we have from our RICAS, I-Ready, and other school data. So we analyze data, we're looking at student work. We're examining the instructional practices. We're assessing student progress and we're reflecting what to do next, next step. So we are hoping that with that, we can look at some of our task design. And in that task design, from looking at our RICAS data, we've noticed that response to text was a weak area for us and vocabulary development. And as far as the response to text, it's not just the ELA, but in our area of math and problem-solving, answering complete problems through redraw and write and explanation. So those were some of our key targets to address our instructional core. And we're hoping that that will help drive not only student progress, but our collaboration among the teachers and just a better overall place to have positive performance. As for recovery, it's going to address district goal number one. We've worked very hard looking at our MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Support. We have lots of things in place already. But one thing that we know that we have to work on more diligently is streamlining some of our interventions and providing progress monitoring tools to ensure that we're talking apples to apples when we're asking teachers to work with students. For example, in the area of fluency, we want everyone using kind of the similar measures. So one teacher isn't using one way to teach fluency and another teacher's using a completely different way. We're trying to streamline some of our practices there. We also are looking at some of our facilitated planning. We're working together in alignment with our task design and for our recovery to make sure that whatever we are planning is aligned to what the students need. We also have our tutoring program that was super successful last spring. We're starting it soon and we're identifying students based on our RICAS data that were a little bit cusp-y and also looking at some of our cusp-y kids, hoping to push them up. And so our next round of tutoring might address some of our more needy students for the next two rounds in preparation of RICAS, in preparation of some other elements to support their, just their ongoing learning. But we thought if we started with our cusp-y kids, we'd be able to hit the ground running and give them the support they needed. And as far as social emotional, we also added our health and wellness teacher and we have our SEL coach and our SEL support person, Tara Reddington, who is actually teaching some classes this year to support students in, in their best interests. And that's aligned to district goal number three. Any questions?
Diane?
Yeah, Lisa, I'm just curious. At this stage, what's your estimate of the number of students that will need the tutoring support?
So right now, we, I'm, I'm not sure the exact number of who we've invited, but we do have about seven teachers taking on students. I think it was, it's, there's a range. Lots of kids could use extra support. I don't know the exact number, Diane. I'll have to get back to you on that one. But it, it was a pretty nice chunk of students. But we're just trying to, you know, based on teacher input, parent wanting to participate and our, our data. But I, I don't have the exact number, so I can get back to you.
Do you think it's less than when the first tutoring program?
Probably no. Probably about the same. We, we were super successful and I think parents really appreciated it. Our goal is to get as many kids in as possible, you know, just to provide that support. We are just trying to look at, you know, recruitment and recovery.
And is during the school day?
So we'll do, no, ours is before school and after school. But we do have intervention supports during the school day, built into the schedule. So we have, you know, it's the best of all worlds, really.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on the before school. You know, you had the, the summer tutoring program. There was certainly more flexibility during that time. I'm wondering how you're considering families who may not have access of getting children to school before school, if that is even an issue?
So it, it's not a huge issue, thankfully. But so kind of what we do is during the school day, they still do get support within the school day. So they're tiered already and are met with during intervention time. So it's just another opportunity. So, and we do let parents have choice, you know, what works best for their schedule. We don't assign a time. We, we work with parents as closely as we can.
Any other questions for the elementary school? All right, thank you.
Okay, I need to give a shout out to my next person here who helped me with the design of the slides. So you'll see something similar, you'll see a similar theme.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. As far as what the happenings at the peer school, just to be brief, we had our first round of auditions for Adam's family, which is going to be our spring production. We had auditions today and we have auditions again tomorrow. Today was fifth and sixth grade. A lot of kids turning out for that, so that's exciting. The PTO has their holiday shop up and running in the cafeteria, on the stage. Sports are going to be starting in December, so a lot of kids are getting on their family ID, getting that taken care of. But, you know, for me, the big news was I was walking over to the high school for a meeting on Monday, I guess it was, and I see this heavy machinery out in the backyard. I'm like, what is going on? The playground is being installed. I'm so excited and the kids are so excited. I'm out there every day looking to see what. They were pouring concrete and I was giggling. So it's really, really great to see. It's, it's really nice finally seeing that coming to fruition. I took pictures of it and sent it back to, you know, Marilyn Corrigan and Cheryl Butler, who were probably the people in the beginning of this. And I was like, it's happening, it's actually happening. So that's kind of a quick overview. Getting to my school development plan. When we opened school in August and I was talking to the staff about it, and I love alliteration, it was all about return and recovery. I wanted to return to some of the work that we had started before that March when we had to shut down. It was return to school, return to get things the way they were more normal. So kids were out of pods and moving around. So connected to the school improvement plan or the school development plan, we're going to talk about return to the instructional core and then the recovery. So return to instructional core is, there's a lot to say about that. It's not just about the task design because there are a lot of pieces that feed into that. So first and foremost, thank you for bringing Karen Hess here to really kind of get our focus on that again, get our conversation circled around that again. Because it really did, it went a little cold. So we had to fan the embers and get it going again. And we had to return to that kind of, the language of that, to begin to look at that. We had started that, we had a lot of instructional rounds at the peer school based on that, looking at that rubric and looking at tasks. Where are they? What are the kids being asked to do and things like that? So having Hess here really gave us that, that boost that we needed so we have those conversations. In our planning from last year, building the schedule, we have it now so that teachers have content times. So the math teachers, everyone can meet once a week with their like-content partner. So they are sharing things, they're collaborating on tasks. I'm meeting with the math and the, not the math. I am not meeting with the math people. I am meeting with the ELA and Social Studies people and Emily Shardie, the dean who has science-math background. She meets with the math and the science to see what is the task. We look at it, we take out the rubrics. We're having really rich conversations around that as well as then looking at the student work. What did this produce? Did they, did it work? Didn't it work? How can we do it better? So we're returning to those conversations that we started quite some time ago and that's been very exciting. There's a lot of new staff on board now, so we kind of have to do a little bit of professional development around that. Sometimes it's on the fly just to get them familiar with the language that we're talking about. We did do some instructional rounds recently. We had a little mini-rounds. We went and we looked at math at the peer school, just to kind of create a quick, a quick snapshot of it. It was myself and Pete and Emily and just to see where are we? And we, I realized that the way things stack up on a Friday, we could get to all of the contents, the five or six contents that are going and get that snapshot, even weekly if we wanted to. So Emily and I kind of committed to doing that a little more often just with the focus of this one thing. It might be what it more often, just with the focus of this one thing. It might be what are teachers asking kids to do? What are kids actually doing? So that we kind of get a sense of where our work needs to go, where we can put our emphasis in. What we're beginning to find, and when we run on this is, as much as we need to look at the instructional task that we're asking kids to do, we also need to look at the instructional strategies, what strategies are teachers using in order to support those tasks. So there's a lot of exciting work. It's a lot of big work, but I think it's probably one of the biggest things in my school development plan to really, as Pete says, when we met in July or June, it's like, where are you going to place your bets? And this is the place where I really am. I think it's a really important part. And it goes to the data that we got at Survey Works, which was really eye-opening in that 78%, I think it was, it was over 70% of the teachers thought students were engaged. You know, students are engaged in the work, but when you looked at the student answer to that same question, it was significantly less. So, you know, what is the difference between engagement and compliance? You know, I'm doing what you ask me to do, but does that mean I'm engaged? So we're asking those questions around task design, around instructional strategies. So that's one of the big pieces in my school development plan. The other R was recovery, academic and social emotional recovery. And the academic recovery, we've really come a long way. We've done, really refined our MTSS system, as my friend Lisa was speaking to earlier. We have, you know, monthly meetings where we are checking on progress of kids, all kids. Either our interventionists are given a report out or we, teachers are bringing kids to the agenda. We're looking at that work. We're considering where are they? What are our next step? We're looking at all sorts of data points that we have on that student and really trying to do wraparound services. We not only do an academic, we're also doing behavioral and social emotional. So there's a big cast of characters. The teachers are there, the interventionists are there, the school psychologists, the guidance counselor. So it really is everybody having conversations around kids. And Jill is there as well, kind of to monitor us, make sure we stay on task. And also just is our intervention program. And again, going back in the spring, we're really thoughtful in our scheduling and we have a much more targeted intervention during the school day program for students who are tier three, which would be two or three years below grade level and tier two. And they really are getting a lot of very direct, pointed instruction in their areas that they need support. And we also have very intensive Orton Gillingham interventions now happening with kids, with Melissa O'Neil as also Jess Drinkwater has joined the peer school and she's doing some very intensive Wilson reading intervention. So it's a really full complement of services that our kids are getting. So I'm hoping that we're going to see some traction in that, in their classroom performances and them feeling better about themselves in school and feeling successful. We also have been doing a lot, we too are going to be bringing along a tutoring program again. We haven't had very much luck finding people who are interested in tutoring. So viewers at home, if you would like to join us and be a tutor for the peer school, we would welcome your application. It's on school spring. We really are looking for some tutors to come along and we want to start that program again. We're not really sure who we're going to target as a population. We really like trying to look at where the need is. A lot of our students who are three, two to three years below grade level are getting a lot of in-school, very targeted interventions. So we may actually look at a different pocket. We may look at what Lisa was saying, those cusp kids. We may look at kids who are, you know, where they say red, yellow, green, those kids who are just, those highly yellows. What do they need? What is that extra support that they need? You know, we're going to want to be really thoughtful about who we are going to target, but first we need tutors to come and help that happen. So hopefully we'll be able to pull that off. And the social emotional, which is really important, particularly in the middle school years, and it's, it's been, I'm going to be really honest, it has been a very tricky fall. Student Services have really been breaking a sweat this fall. Kids are in interesting places, coming off of the world that they were in and kind of returning to school. I think one of the things that has really helped us tremendously is our looping model. I think kids, except for of course our fifth graders and our seventh graders, because they went to new teams, but our eighth graders returning to those same teachers that they had last year. Our sixth graders returning to those same teachers that they had last year. They know who they are. They know, you know, they know each other. There's established relationships. So that has really helped tremendously, I think, on the social emotional part. Our student services team, as I said earlier, we already meet weekly. We meet more often than that on the fly. And that really is working with families and outside agencies as well as things that are happening in school. We have had significantly more work with outside agencies just in this first quarter than we would have probably all last year and the year before. So there has been a lot of, it's been a very good, vibrant and well-articulated outside agencies and working together, but, and it's been effective. We continue to have weekly team meetings, myself and the dean and all the teachers and again, the school psychologists and the guidance council. We meet with every team of teachers every week. And we talk about kids and who they're worried about and parent contacts and things like that. So we are always in those conversations and strategizing and trying to figure out how we can make kids feel good about themselves and feel like they belong and that we are taking, they're taken care of. We have the advisory program back this year, which we didn't have last year because we were in stable pods. So it's nice for kids to be back with their advisors weekly. I know recently the health curriculum teachers took a look at that recent legislation around suicide prevention and they were very pointed and very, you know, specific about where they needed to shore up what they're doing in their health curriculum and where they've already covering those topics. You know, staff will be getting, in our January staff meeting, they'll be getting the suicide prevention PD again. And, you know, we continue to do those things. And then there's just like being silly too. You know, we all wore our costumes. I don't know if you saw, I was a dinosaur for a day. That was pretty great. So we still can try to do those silly things with kids as well. There is a lot of fun things. There's right now, the National Junior Honor Society is doing a drive for toiletries for the Johnny Cake Center. We're going to have a food drive coming up again. So all those things that we kind of had to get away from last year, we're starting to bring back and kind of get that sense of community again. So that's where we are at the peer school. Great. Thank you. Any questions for the peer school? Josh?
I have one. Just about the tutoring program. We know it's difficult to find tutors. Would this tutoring be before school or after school as well?
I think it would be both, either before or after school.
So I wonder, really just curious, if there is a way of engaging high school students either as community service or part-time employment to be a part of that process, considering, you know, we do have some exceptional.
I think that's certainly something we can look into. I think the people who found that they did the tutoring, there's a, it's a lot of prep and you have to really, you know, it's tricky stuff. I think a high school student could serve along with maybe a certified teacher and tutor and kind of help be next to set of hands, but, or a one-on-one, but the small group tutoring might be more of a challenge. But we could maybe even reach out to the teaching CTA and see if maybe she has some students who might want to come down and be part of that process.
Great. Any other questions for the peer school? Diane?
Mary Ann, you mentioned towards the end about more engagement with outside agencies. Is that being done on a community and schools model where the agency comes into the school or is it more of a referral?
It's more of a referral.
Referral?
A referral, yeah. We've had, we've been, we've been very successful in having some successful referrals for families who need support.
Any other questions for the peer school? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, on to the high school. Mr. Warner.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity. So a little bit about this high school highlights. We had our open house, as Alex had mentioned earlier. It was well-attended and parents had a lot of great questions. We were able to showcase our, not only our CTE programs, but also departments in our school and it was well-received. We're also holding our parent-teacher conferences this week. We had them yesterday from four to seven. We have them tomorrow from four to seven. And yesterday was pretty well-attended as well. So we're happy about that. You heard from our FFA group, it was fantastic. It was my first time going there and they did a great job. 62,000 kids with blue jackets, you know, going into with a Indianapolis Colts play. It was, it was really outstanding. And they're rock stars. You know, half of the country thinks Rhode Island's in New York. And so they came over to our, you know, to our, our display and saw the boat and the kids are really into it. And they really represented the town in Narragansett in fine fashion. So we're really proud of that. Our music department had their first fall concert, which is wonderful. And we've had a great fall with regards to athletics. So all teams, boys and girls cross-country teams did great. Our girls soccer team was one win away from going to the state finals in girls soccer. Our girls volleyball team won the state championship on Saturday. Our boys soccer team was in the finals of the state championship on Sunday. Our boys football team is in the state championship this Friday evening. So it's been a great fall for Narragansett High School athletics and the kids have been doing really well. And so we're looking forward to parent-teacher conferences, as I said yesterday, and we just finished our first quarter. So things are going swimmingly at the high school. So if I can turn to our school development plan, if there was a theme, it would be focus on the student. So to prepare students with the knowledge, skills and habits of mind to meet the challenges, we want to focus on math skills and reading skills. Last year, you folks had budgeted, we budgeted for interventionists, the math interventionists, which we hadn't had in some time. We have a reading interventionist as well, which is new to the high school. So we're working through interventions. We're identifying and intervening much earlier. We're using our I Ready like the other two schools, PSAT scores and SAT scores. We, our academies are back up and running and they meet every Friday. 90% of the teachers aren't in academy. They talk about kids. They go over grades and they report out to the interventionists and it's a seamless operation. So they're doing well. Our second goal around supporting and retaining high-quality staff and again, focusing on the student, we want to include more students in that sort of process. We want to include students in different school committees, whether it be on interview teams or looking over our program of studies. Or we want students more involved in their education. So I know you can't read that. That's too bad. But we want to create committees that bring expertise and content knowledge to the process, including constituencies, students, parents, community members, when and where appropriate. So it has been hard for kids coming back into the building. We're trying to get them refocused on school, the way that we used to have school. And it's been difficult for them. Teachers have been stepping up to the plate and we're creating opportunities for kids through the tutoring program that you guys spoke of. But we want kids to be more involved in their own education and we're there to support through, like I said, our academies and creating opportunities for kids to blossom the way they had been prior to the pandemic. Another goal of ours is to create a safe and, safe and healthy space for kids. So our goal for is to develop student engagement, identity, voice and choice. Myself and the assistant principal meet with our student council on a bi-weekly basis. We meet with class councils. We've created a student review board to help us with the governance of our school. So our school improvement plan, we do focus on the academics with regard to looking at how they're doing, looking at their scores, trying to support them, trying to get them back to where we were pre-pandemic and also get them more involved in the governance of our school and trying to help us help them to be successful. It works well with the juniors and seniors. We're using them as role models for the freshmen and sophomores and it seems to be going very well. We want to create conditions where kids feel some ownership in their school. And we think we're off to a good start. So.
Thank you. Any questions for the high school? Alex?
I just want to applaud the whole wanting to get students more involved and the creation of this student review board. And really appreciate that. I know that's something I've been advocating for and pushing for, to even get a representative here at the school committee meetings would be even more fantastic to hear from them directly. And just to quoting you, the ownership of the, of the programs and their involvement and really seeing that come to action even here at the meetings would be really great. So really appreciate all the work that's going on there and all the highlights that you've touched on.
Thank you. And I'm glad you brought that up. We have students coming to our faculty meetings and giving us a student outlook on what's going on in the school. Through our Educator Rising program, kids are making small snippets for our faculty on what works best for them. And so we're having great dialogue between the adults and the students in the building. And it is really, we use the term, a high tide raises all boats. And we're trying to model that for our students and it seems to be, to be working. So we're happy with the direction we're going. There's a lot of work to do. Students have lost a lot over the last year and a half. And we have teachers working really hard to try to get them back up to speed, try to figure out what it is that they're missing and provide that support for them.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the high school?
Just a quick question. Do you anticipate senior project judging to be in-person and community involvement this year?
We do. We do anticipate people in our building looking over senior project. We're trying hard to get back to some more normalcy. The kids understand where we're at. They're being very flexible and I agree with my colleagues, the kids have been very resilient. But they're ready to get back and they're ready to get back into, you know, the normal swing of things at the high school. So they are stepping up.
All right. Thank you. All right, on to special services.
Thank you for having Jill and myself. In the Office of Student Services, we play many different roles to support our district as a whole, special education being part of that. And so when we looked at our district plan, we tried to think of what are some of those initiatives that we're really working on this year, in addition to all the other work that we're doing that's really not listed in the plan at all. The first one's aligned very closely and hopefully there's a pattern where you're going to hear things that you've already heard from the three principals, because we're trying to support the initiatives that are happening in each of the schools, but from a district level and to make sure that we have equity for our students with disabilities and without disabilities. So the first part is really, how are we using data? And we can think about that from an intervention lens. And one of Jill's key roles is to support the MTSS programs throughout the district. So I'll let her speak about that briefly.
Hi, good evening. As Melissa said, yes, I am fortunate enough to be able to work alongside the principals, the deans in all three schools right now, where you've probably heard the same thing. We're meeting monthly. We meet with the interventionists, meet with the classroom teachers. We're reviewing data from I Ready, informal assessments, classroom progress, and we determine if an intervention is needed. And then we get back together to determine if the intervention's working and move there. I say, we have truly streamlined the process in the past few years. The principals are wonderful to work with. Very happy we have an interventionist, both math and ELA at the high school right now. So it's been great working with them also.
So then we continue from the intervention process and we work with also using that data for the referral process for special education. Once a child is found eligible, we want to make sure that teachers, especially our special educators, are well-versed in how are they using data. are well-versed in how are they using data to not only design the IEP, the Individual Educational Plan, but also how are they designing the specially-designed instruction that those students are receiving, both in the general education setting and in more specialized programming. And so we're connecting to I Ready and all the different initiatives that are happening to make sure that that's happening within those plans also. The second thing is really working on the professional development that our special educators and support service, um, staff are receiving. I think you're already aware that every special educator in the state, including other roles within the district, are receiving 50 hours of reading training through the Right to Read Act. So that's taking up two years of our training. So it's caused Jill and I to have to be far more creative about how do we provide professional development on top of what they're already receiving so that we don't push them to overwhelm. And so we've been really brainstorming. How do we embed it into the natural conversations that we're having with them? When we're in the schools, when we're observing, when we're attending meetings with parents with them? And then the opportunities that we have them after school. We're also looking to expand our website so that there are additional resources for both parents and teachers, so that they can go there, um, for some professional resources. Had this really exciting opportunity to do some training for all of our staffs at the beginning of the year around the history of special education and what it really is. And that led into, uh, myself in the district technology coach, offering a professional development series at both our high school and the middle school one is starting, that is taking place during planning periods, where teachers are volunteering to come during their planning period to work on instructional core practices. And so really excited about that opportunity. Jill's going to talk a little bit about preschool, which is also under our office.
So preschool, we, um, we're looking forward to moving forward with Bright Stars accreditation for this year. But unfortunately, there's been a delay with Bright Stars not, um, going into the schools right now due to COVID precautions. So the pre-K team is still, um, they have CPT planning like the other grade levels at the elementary school. So we're working and we're just discussing progress, um, current practice, just to make sure we're prepared for next year. And also, uh, the playground has started. So we're really excited for that piece too.
So Jill and I actually spent the day in Warwick and will be there for the next two days because we are working with, uh, two school psychologists to be trained as trainers of, uh, train, being trained as the trainers for our district for safety care. So we are moving from us being a CPI, which is in the name of another company that does training, to safety care, which spends far more time on strategies to help students or teachers help students to de-escalate and keep staff and students safe. There's been a lot of conversation about social emotional learning tonight. And we really think that this will be a key next step for Narragansett. So after we finish this training, we've been told we aren't allowed to train anyone tonight. We have to wait till Friday night. The instructor's making us wait till we finish on Friday afternoon. But we'll immediately come back. We'll work with the, um, key teams from each of the schools, make sure they're fully trained, and then come back and work with faculties, uh, making sure all those de-escalation techniques are out there and teachers are comfortable with them. So that is really also key to our work. The, the next one is, um, and you've already heard a lot about this, is our 18 to 22-year-old program. I have to say, after I spoke about it last time at a school committee meeting, we got two phone calls of people that want to come from other districts. So I'm doing some tours next week. So we are really excited. But one of the things that we're also really excited about is we, we are one of three school districts in the state that have been accepted, um, as a pilot site for a new national, um, strategy for how to help students with significant disabilities seek paid employment. And so we'll be working with a professional, uh, national trainer on that with our teacher and use one of our students and families to go through that process, but then to be able to carry that over to our other students. So we're really excited about that. And Josh and Alex already talked about our special education local advisory committee. We did send out a survey to all of our parents. We had 51 responses. Parents gave great feedback, um, about what they saw as really being the strengths of our program. Gave us some suggestions on areas we can continue to grow, so we'll be using that. Um, we had our first meeting. We do have three parents who have stepped up to maybe start our new leadership team. So I'll be working closely with them and then hope to have some meetings starting in the spring. One of the other things that came out of the survey is, uh, parents had an opportunity to give a shout out to some teachers. And I was just really excited and impressed every time I read a new one about the really kind words and how much the parents really, um, appreciate our staff. And Jill and I also do, as I know you do. And that is kind of a highlight of what we're going to work on this year.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for special services? All right. Oh, Diane's question?
Just one. So our transition academy is open to, um, students outside of our, our district?
So it's a little different than a CTE program where a family could just call us and ask if their child could come to us. It would have to be, because special education is guided by all these regulations, both state and federal. It would have to be an IEP team decision. So if a student was in a school district that was looking for other options, then they could view us as being one of their options. So I, the email, I can put this right out there. The email I will send back is, please contact your special education director and they will get in touch with me and we can begin the conversation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Any other questions for special services? All right. All right, Dr. Cummings, back to you.
Thank you. And I'd like to again thank our principals and Melissa and Jill. So they put a lot of work into these plans. And the full plans, you just got a brief overview, but the full plans, you know, certainly have their specific goals, their action steps, the data that they're collecting along the way. And those are aligned to our district plan, which is aligned to the school committee goals. And so, you know, as we go forward, we'll do a mid-year check-in with those plans. And so we'll give the committee some updates on that mid-year check-in. And then our results and outcomes at the end of the year really are, how do these plans work? What did we learn from them? What worked, what didn't work? What data, was the data telling us? And then what are our next steps? And so all of those pieces, you know, are really part of their, uh, leadership work. So along with all the day-to-day things of just managing a school, you know, they're really looking strategically at kind of how are they continuing to move learning forward for the, for the children in their schools? And how are they continuing to support, uh, teachers and families as they do that? So a lot of really hard work that went into that. So I know I thank them for it all the time, but I just want to do that publicly because it is not easy to do. Part two of our report tonight is, I gotta turn my ringer off there, sorry. So part two of our report tonight is, last night, we did meet with a group of parents, as you heard in, uh, public forum, to go over some, uh, pieces of our middle school math. And so, um, I'm not going to go over the whole presentation that we went over tonight. I have a few select slides. I did send the committee the whole presentation from last night. And we did send that out to the whole peer community as well. But just as a reminder, you know, so part of the impetus for what we're doing is really looking at our curriculum. And that comes out of some of the state ed reform laws that came through. Quite honestly, it also comes from our data. You know, our student achievement data in mathematics, while it's decent for Rhode Island, if you look at the wider context of the world, it's not great. You know, we should have more than 50% of our kids, uh, being college-ready. We should have more than 30% of our kids at proficiency. And so we have a lot of work to do in terms of getting kids up to where we need for them to be in terms of accessing higher-level math. And so one of the things that we worry about is how do students persist as they go through from middle school to high school? And one of the indicators we look at is how many students are accessing higher-level math classes. One of the higher-level math classes that we have had consistently is calculus. So our AP Stats class is relatively new, so we don't have a lot of data yet in terms of how many kids persist from kind of eighth grade, um, through, uh, AP Stats. What we do know is that we, um, just go back one, Lauren. What we do know is that out of the cohorts that we've had recently in the last three years, you know, um, in the 1920s school year, um, we lost about 40% of the kids that had taken eighth-grade math, so they didn't persist through calculus. In the 2021 year, we lost close to 30% of the kids who didn't persist the calculus. And then in the 2122 school year, we lost again around 40%. Now, is every kid going to take calculus? No. Is this a stat that you have to take in context? Absolutely. There's lots of reasons why kids wouldn't take calculus, right? But overall, what we are hoping for is that kids are accessing higher-level math. And so we had a committee that really looked at curriculum materials. It involved all the teachers teaching them. You know, our high school teachers, our, some administrators, Gail, our math coach. And they came up with a, a few recommendations. So one being, um, and again, as a reminder, we went over these last spring, right? And so this is just a review of what we did in the spring. You know, adopt more rigorous curriculum materials and a pathway for all, right? And so, and to reduce the tracking because kids were getting tracked out of accessing higher-level math. So we were making choices, um, about students when they were 10, 11, 12 years old that were defining what their opportunities would be when they graduated from high school. And so we thought that really was something that we needed more flexible pathways so that we're continuing to support our students who are excelling, but we're bringing up our students who need a little bit more help. And so we needed to revise those pathways so that there is access to high-level math for all students. We need to solidify our math foundations and skills to strengthen the potential and persistence through higher-level math. What the data is telling us is that our students are not having the base foundational skills that they need to be able to move forward and really understand the math that they're doing. And then finally, um, you know, what we really need to do is to increase that college readiness. And so what the PSAT and SAT is telling us is that 50% or less of our students are on track or are college-ready when they graduate. And so again, very worrisome, right? We want kids to be able to access, um, college-level mathematics, you know, when they graduate from high school. So, um, really what we are doing is kind of looking and shifting some pieces of the curriculum around. And again, you know, this is an example of, um, just at one level, right? Algebra one, what it starts to look like. And so, you know, again, whereas the old algebra one had kind of just algebraic concepts in it and kind of very traditional, kind of, I think probably what we all took when we were in high school. You know, now we're getting some more concepts in our math eight of some, a good chunk of those algebra concepts. We're also having, uh, some geometry pieces in there, right? We're also having kind of mathematical modeling, all sorts of different pieces. So really increasing the level of rigor of our eighth-grade mathematics. But what we also know is that there's going to be some students who are ready for algebra one, right? But the old algebra one was not providing enough foundation. So we did beef up that class as well. And so that's both at the middle school and the high school, we're aligning those pieces. So we looked at a lot of research as we went through, right? And, you know, just to highlight a couple of things, you know, one, and I think this is the piece, you know, we talked a lot about last night and, you know, I will certainly emphasize again here today. This, the key to success is readiness. Are you ready to take algebra one? And students are different to take, are ready to take algebra one at different times in their pathways. And because of that, we shouldn't be punishing students around developmental stages and saying, because you're not yet ready to take algebra one in the eighth grade, you cannot access higher-level math ever, right? And that's what we're really trying to get away from. What we're trying to say is, we know that a lot of kids are very different students when they're 14, 15, 16-year-old, when they're, than they were when they were maybe nine or 10 or 11 years old. And so we want to give the students time to develop and to grow as they go forward. And so with that, let me go to the next one. We really looked at different levels of research, right? So we looked, you know, kind of all over the place. You know, one place where we got, um, you know, a lot of feedback is National Council of Teachers in Mathematics. You know, one of the things that they really go through is that, um, you know, successful completion of a rigorous algebra course requires students to have the prerequisite mathematical understandings and skills as well as a work ethic that includes the tenacity to stick with a problem or concept until it makes sense and the willingness to spend more time on assignments and classwork. So what we're really looking for is that level of maturity that students are working through. Now, we know that doesn't happen by magic, right? We know that happens through practice. We know that happens through great teaching. We know that happens through differentiation. We know that happens through a thoughtful curriculum that moves forward, supporting kids as they go through this. And so, you know, what our teachers designed were really some pathways to calculus that are differentiated. And so, uh, the first one here, and again, I have sent you all the slide that has all the pathways on it at the same time, right? These are those same pathways that are broken out. You know, pathway one to calculus is seventh-grade math. And when they're highlighted in yellow, what that means is that there are, uh, options for the honors modules, right? And so, uh, what that means is that that is some differentiated work. I think there's been some, um, you know, implementation pieces with that where, and we got some great feedback last night where students were really feeling like they needed more support in that. And so that's some of the feedback that, you know, we'll certainly put into action as we go forward and work with teachers on that. So, you know, the, the, but this pathway is one that we've always had and will continue to have. It's seventh-grade math, algebra, algebra one in grade eight, honors algebra two, our honors or college prep algebra two, then on to geometry, then pre-calculus, and then calculus. So that's kind of the traditional pathway that we've always had. The next pathway is, um, you know, one that the teachers put a lot of thought into. And again, this was a team of high school and middle school teachers where, um, students can go seventh-grade math, eighth-grade math, algebra one, honors geometry. Then they will take a combined honors, uh, algebra two and pre-calculus class and then on to calculus. Or they could choose just to go to algebra two and then to pre-calculus, right? But again, you know, what we're really looking for is that students are accessing that higher-level math. And so we would want students, if they're not going on to calculus, to strongly consider doing AP Stats, which is, they're really eligible for after they finish algebra two. A third pathway, uh, is students can go through seventh-grade math, eighth-grade math, algebra one. Then they would do a combined honors, uh, geometry and algebra two. Then they would go on to, uh, pre-calculus and then calculus, right? So again, lots of different ways for students to be able to get to higher-level math when they go forward. And so, you know, one of the things that, um, you know, we really like to, uh, go through through this whole process is the idea that, um, you know, students are not sorted or selected when they're very early on. So there's lots of opportunities for them to go there. That math is interesting. That math is challenging, right? That there's problem solving. And that we are really embedding those grade-level standards into all of the things that we're doing. And so it's been a lot of hard work. I would say that, you know, the collaboration of the teachers and our curriculum folks has been excellent. We've been kind of really going through this. And as you know, we've kind of given you updates along the way. And so last night, a lot of great questions, um, you know, some really good feedback around, um, how students were interpreting pieces. You know, we certainly, um, you know, took a lot of that back to teachers. So we're kind of meeting with teachers, I believe it's, right? And kind of doing it as we go forward. Again, it's a iteration. I think, you know, all of us, as we go forward, um, when you look at math achievements in the United States as a whole, right? It's, it's not impressive. And when you look at Rhode Island in particular, it is also not impressive, right? And so I think just the culture around mathematics needs some, um, some energizing, right? And so, you know, what we're trying to do is to give it that energy. We have great faculty. We have excellent math teachers that are really putting their heart and soul into helping all chi, all kids to achieve. And we're supporting our teachers in that.
Any questions from the school committee for Dr. Cummings? Josh? Josh?
So, a little narrative and maybe a question. So as a parent who attended that meeting, one, thank you for hosting that. And I think the level of clarity and the research and the input and looking at sort of historical information was valuable to better understanding the rationale behind the decision, so from you and the support of your team, you know, I really want to say thank you for doing that. I also want to thank our parents because I think that's important to note, that in this community, we do have parents who have the capacity, the ability, and the willingness to challenge and seek clarity. So I want to recognize that call to be heard by parents and, and just as a member of this committee who's representing that group, that I feel as though you did take that feedback very serious. You know, we, you and I did debrief a little bit about the conversation, and the immediacy of you and your team to go back with the feedback that you heard to already begin making some change is important to note. And I don't think now it's a matter of whether it's right or wrong to take this, this new path. I think letting families know that the access is still there. If, if your child is academically ready, or you as a parent feel as though your child is academically ready, we can have sort of that negotiation to create the opportunity that, that students have had in the past. I think what, what shifted, that's also really important to note, is, you know, initially, when this was rolled out, it was more, it was delivered more as highly independent and self-driven. Granted, we had the videos and the support, and students would have to seek additional support, whether it's through SOAR or enrichment or after school, which can also be a little complicated. But we heard from the parents, many of the parents talking about the level of differentiation that can occur in a mixed ability classroom. And so I think that's one of the pieces of feedback that you took back very quickly to say, we think that there are ways with the right training and professional development and resources that we can offer opportunities in the classroom for students to have access to a certified math teacher, sometimes on the spot when they're beginning or they're finding that challenge. And I think that's, I think that's what we as parents all hoped for, is that it wouldn't be solely independent, that our children felt like they were just doing more, and so I appreciate that. One parent did bring up how students would be getting feedback, and I think that's a great way of building that feedback loop. One, I guess, question to consider is moving forward, how the school, and I heard you already addressing a little bit of this, how can the school or the district continue to receive feedback themselves from students, from parents, and from the teachers around the effectiveness of, of this program? I have a few notes. I did take notes, so I have them all. That made sense to me.
Right, and, and our team did as well.
Yes, yes, I'm sure. I'm not questioning that. And then the ongoing communication, like what, what might that look like throughout the course of the year as this program does evolve? Because we know it's new, and we know we need to do something different. I mean, these numbers, numbers are, are, it's a bit depressing, and we know that Rhode Island's scores particularly across the nation are, are representing very low outcomes. So we do appreciate the redesign and the thinking. But as, as that representative, I do need to, to be sure that people are being heard from, from what they're saying, and I want to acknowledge that from the feedback that I've received from you already and from the team, that it was immediate response. And even questions around, are you ready, and the feedback that you'll be looking for and the way you'll be engaging students is something that I think we should make public that that is coming and it is happening. The one question I do have separate from that is, is the current grade eight, and I don't expect an answer today because I know that it's really complicated for many reasons. But just considering the implications of that much core content learning loss that's sort of perceived now with not being in the classroom, of what that might look like moving forward, and if, if we really anticipate students having the outcomes or closing the gaps, or the program being as effective as we originally thought under this current structure, I think Mary Ann used really great language, the two Rs. What were they, Mary Ann? Yeah, return and recovery, right? So is that, is that rate of return and recovery going to be what we intended under this current
Any other questions or comments from the school committee?
I just have a comment. You know, I always think of math as being very hierarchical, and so I think the, the work that Gail's been leading in terms of doing vertical articulation is the need for that work to continue and, and be comprehensive, I think, is coming out in terms of the foundational work to make sure our students are ready for the various math pathways that they want to pursue. So, so I just want to say I hope that work is continuing in terms of vertical articulation from grade to grade, from school to school.
Any other questions or comments from the school committee? Josh?
I just, I also need to recognize the teachers who put together this program. In addition to their full teaching load, they've designed, they've recorded, they're implementing these enrichment modules, these honors modules, and they're expected to provide feedback individually to these, to these students on top of their already scheduled responsibilities. And so, you know, I, I think that's commendable and brave, and I'm just concerned for them and their well-being and efficacy.
And, you know, and I appreciate that. And as we said last night, and as Mary Ann and I have discussed and as we're in touch with teachers with, if we need to provide additional resources, we will do that. We're at the very beginning of the process. And so, you know, as we go forward, we may need to make some adjustments, and that is natural when you are implementing programs, right? So you collect data, you get feedback, you look at it, you make adjustments, and, you know, you get better every, every, you know, hopefully every week, right? And so, and that's really what our process is as we go forward.
Any other questions or comments from the school committee? All right, and thank you for hosting that meeting last night. All right, back to you, Peter.
Okay. You know, in general, I think the, the, the principals really covered lots of stuff that's going on. You know, what I will say is just give a, a quick COVID update, right? And, you know, we continue to have some cases bubbling up, so we did have to quarantine a preschool class this week. And preschool is particularly challenging, just because the, the little ones don't mask super well and, and they are very close together. And so, you know, again, we, we do continue to urge people to get vaccinated, to be cautious, to do all these things. You know, we do suspect that a lot of these are still ripple effects from Halloween. We do, you know, anticipate having an uptick in cases coming from the upcoming holidays. If you recall, last year, after Thanksgiving is when things really started to get a little chaotic, and we did have to shut down the, the elementary school for a week close to Christmas. So we're hoping that we don't get to that place again. You know, we have better mitigation strategies in place in terms of testing, and so we are, you know, doing hundreds of tests a week, and we have caught a couple of cases before they could spread. So that has been an effective strategy as we go forward. But I do want to just, again, acknowledge that on top of everything else that you heard the principals talk about tonight, you know, one thing they didn't talk about that is a major part of every day is dealing with COVID. And so, you know, contact tracing, having the mitigation strategies in place, kind of, all of these things is a major lift, you know, for the entire district going forward. So while we can't just say, oh, we're not going to do teaching and learning because we're dealing with COVID, we have to continue to do those pieces, you know, also understand that there's a whole extra layer of things that our, our teachers, administrators, Steve, nurses, all those things are doing to try to keep everyone safe.
All right, so that concludes your superintendent's report. Okay, all right, thank you. So we are moving on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent to approve consent agenda items CA 1A, CA 1B, CA 2A, CA 2B, CA 2C?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. On to the budget report, Karen?
Okay, expenditures for the four months ended October 31st, total eight million, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. That's twenty-six point nineteen percent of our budget. And our expenditures and encumbrances, total twenty-nine million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and that's eighty-nine percent of our budget.
Thank you. Any questions for Karen? Okay, so we are moving on to school committee business. Item number one, is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent to approve the second reading of the 2122 emergency closure and professional learning policy for Narragansett School System?
So moved.
Discussion? Pete?
So again, as we went over last time, right? So, you know, this is really giving us the flexibility to have remote learning days when we would need them. And so, you know, if it's approved, what we will put on our December agenda is just an amendment to the calendar to allow us to do that. And, you know, what I would say is, again, I appreciate the committee thinking about it in such a way that we have the flexibility to do a remote learning day when the conditions warrant it, and also have the ability to have just a, an emergency closure day if it's not, if the conditions are not optimal for distance learning.
Any questions from any school committee members? Sure.
I just want to say thank you for working through this and putting this together. This is really going to set the bar high, I think, for other districts as well, and I really, really appreciated your feedback, and, and I think this is really well-written. And I don't know how, if, if it's like able to be brought up or whatnot, but anyone that has the opportunity to review it, I think it's very straightforward and really well-done, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. On to business item number two, is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent and the director of finance administration to recommend, to recommend the purchase of graphing calculators for Narragansett High School in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars? Pete, do you want to share anything?
Sure, and I see Donna is here as well, so, you know, if you have any specific math questions, Donna is here for backup, I think. But, you know, certainly, one of the great needs that we have for our students is the ability to use a graphing calculator in that higher level math in, on the SAT, on the PSAT. And while we do request that students purchase their own, not every student has the means to purchase their own, and so we do need to have these higher level graphing calculators available to students, should they not be able to purchase their own or, or have a personal one. And, you know, I would encourage you to think about it much the way that we think about our laptop computers, right? Whereas it's a necessary tool for students to access mathematics in the way that we want for them to. And so, you know, again, I would highly recommend that this is a purchase that is not just nice to have, but is necessary, and is something that I think going forward that we will be maintaining. And so, you know, this particular calculator, I know my own children use them, can do just about everything except sliced bread. And so, I don't know, Donna, if there's anything else that you want them to know about these particular calculators?
Should I walk?
Sure, please do.
Hello, everyone. I'm Donna McCad, and I'm the math department chair. And so I just would like to tell you a little bit about the calculators and why it's necessary that we have them for students. So it is an equity issue for students. We, we ask that students that are in Algebra II and higher get their own, but they do cost about a hundred dollars. A lot of times what happens, we have twenty-nine calculators for the entire high school, twenty-nine graphing calculators that the PTO graciously purchased for us about eight years ago. So the six mathematics teachers at the high school, we have to share those. And so obviously, there's times when all of the teachers need the calculators, and only one teacher can have that set because we have twenty-six kids in the class sometimes. So it ends up kind of hit or miss with which students have the calculator, which students know how to use the calculator. And because there is the calculator section on the PSAT, the students are really at a disadvantage because it saves them time. If they know how to use it properly, they can answer many questions by just looking at a graph. They don't have to do any algebra. They can just look at the graph, and it's very intuitive, and they can answer the question quicker, and saves them time, which is the number one thing that students complain about on the PSAT is the time, and they get stressed out, they run out of time. So we're hopeful that if we could have a graphing calculator available for more students in our school, that they would learn to be confident with using the technology, and we would hopefully see an increase in our scores and the kids feeling more confident about math. And I just also wanted to add that there are a lot of things that are just like the graphing calculator. For example, there's a program called Desmos that is a wonderful graphing utility that is on the computer. But however, the students cannot utilize a computer when they're taking the SAT at this point in time. So the Desmos is free. And so we do use that sometimes in the classroom, but then it's so different when they press the buttons on the calculator that if that's all they're accustomed to, they won't know, even know how to use the calculator unless they can practice with it frequently.
Any other questions about the calculator purchase?
Yeah, usually, you know, on a motion, we have a specific price in a specific company. So I know it was referenced that, you know, prices are flexible and fluid and so forth. But do you anticipate it would either be either A or B, math for sale or School Mart?
So I think the first quote on there was the one that had the built-in chargers rather than having to deal with the batteries. So I think that was the preferred one. But it's interesting, just, I checked it again, and I think it's supply, supply chain. So when I checked it again, just a couple of days ago, it looked as though they didn't have the correct amount in stock. So that might just be an issue temporarily, hopefully. But the, the calculators that have the built-in charge, it's like a, a unit that plugs in one time with one plug, and they, they all charge at the same time, rather than having batteries that have to be replaced and whatnot, which is an extra expense. And so that's the kind that we have now, and that, that works out pretty well because we can charge them all at the same time.
This is sure a change. I know way back when, when I was doing the SAT, you couldn't use a calculator.
Right, exactly.
So, I bet the students are real happy they can use them these days.
Yes.
Alex, question?
So just two, two quick things. One, just from my understanding, are the students trained how to use these calculators and, you know, so that they're prepared? I know they're going to get like all of this exposure using it, and I assume that's probably a big deal of their learning process. But I know there's so many buttons on these calculators, and there's always that, oh, gosh, what does this button do?
Well, they're way better at it than we are. So they, it depends on the course that they're enrolled in. Obviously, in, you know, AP Statistics or even pre calc, they're using them a lot. But we really would love to see the Algebra I students using them when they're starting to learn about graphing and intersecting lines. It's, it's really a powerful tool that can help their algebra comprehension. So the hope is that we can bring that instruction right into the classroom and that they'll be really good at it.
That's great. And just one other thing, are these for in-school use only, or?
These are for in-school use, yes. So the hope is that when we have the SAT school day and we have all of the juniors taking the SAT at the same time, that we can give every student a calculator, and so that everybody will be able to have, to have one to use.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions from the school committee? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, motion passes five zero. Thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate that. All right. So for our communications, in our packet, we have a budget schedule. And Pete, has the town council voted on our joint workshop for December 20th at 6:30, or is that like a save the date and then they're going to vote on that shortly?
They will vote on it shortly. I would just save the date right now.
Okay. Interesting date, December 20th, 6:30, but sure.
We have a little Christmas budget here.
You have eggnog at the, in the small boardroom?
Might be a nice addition this year.
Okay. All right, so that's a save the date for December 20th, 6:30. And you can see on the school department side, everything is mapped out with the building committee cap- with the building committee, capital reserve, first and second budget workshops, a placeholder for the third one, and the whole timeline. So any, anything you want to point out, Pete, about the budget timeline for us?
What I would point out, a couple of things. One, that we're starting to go through the staffing process. So, you know, we really put a lot of work in, you know, through December and January to get those things settled. You know, a number of you are on various committees in terms of capital, or building committees and that type of thing, and that's all part of the budget process, okay? So we'll be meeting with those. I think the workshops are particularly important. And, you know, we do plan to have them in-person this year. And so, again, that's something that, you know, we will invite the public in, ask for a lot of questions, really go through the specifics of the budgets as we go forward. And so, you know, those workshops, after I present the overall budget that we go through, is when the committee will be making a lot of decisions. And again, I will kind of remind you all that we designed the budget to be in alignment with the school committee goals. And so we should be able to draw a through line from what a school committee goal is to a budget item that supports that goal, right? And that's really how we organize kind of a lot of our budget priorities as we go forward.
All right, and I think the timeline looks good. And I don't have my other calendar in front of me, but so, when you are presenting the budget to us, February 16th, and then the following week, is that when the February vacation is? So I just wanted, like, we don't have any, there's no school committee meetings during that February break, because we're hearing the budget from you on the 16th, and then we'll have our series of budget workshops, March 2nd, March 9th. You know, save the date for the 14th, and then we'll vote on it the 16th. So I don't see, you purposely didn't schedule any meetings for?
During February vacation, yes.
All right, I think the timeline looks good. Anybody have any questions about the timeline, any of the meetings? All right, then let us know about the town council joint meeting.
Will do.
Other than that, are there any communications that anyone else wants to mention? So we will be back here in person, December 15th, at 7 o'clock for our next regular meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? I can't even see that. Does that say 7:40? 8:40? 8:40? Motion to adjourn at 8:40? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night.